Now I'll call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance here in the, at City Hall tonight and all those that are watching on G-10 television. To begin with this evening, we're going to start, I'm going to have everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Mike Lazzaro, followed by the invocation by our city attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We pause again this evening to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this day, to give you thanks for all the blessings that you so graciously bestow upon us as the city of Jacksonville and upon us individually. As we enter a new year, and have been gifted with this new year, and we recognize the legacy and the, of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we pray that we may commit ourselves to be of service to others, especially in our different roles as members of the city of Jacksonville, and each of us as citizens and residents, that we all can be of service. We pray for those who are serving in our military here and around the world for their safety and their anxious families. And as always, we ask your guidance and your direction to be with our mayor and with our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Counsel, you have the agenda for tonight's meeting before you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move or approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, not all in favor, signal five, I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now I can get it. We have some presentations that we have for this evening. The first, I'm going to start off swearing in the officers to our youth council we have with us tonight. I'd ask Lily, Ray, or Pam. Pam Trafton's with our community engagement. So you want to do them all at one time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm going to read off the officer, the office they're going to hold and the school that they represent. Tamara Waters will be the chairperson. She's from Onslow Early College High School. Also, the parents, when you want to come, you can come up when I call them also. Amara Muller, vice chairman from Huriskin Academy.
Cyan.
Cyan, I'm sorry, Cyan Harper. I was told how to say it before and I forgot how to. Cyan Harper, secretary from White Oak High School.
Today's her birthday.
Today's her birthday. Colin Davis is the recorder, also from Onslow Early College High School. Trista Parrish, the Northside High School seat, and she is from Northside High School. Ruth Ann Wilson is occupying an at-large seat. She's from Wilson Homeschool. Cameron Davis, the at-large seat, also from Onslow Early College High School. Tonight, we're going to administer the oath of office for our 2020 Youth Council, Jacksonville Youth Council Officers. The Youth Council serves to give youth in Jacksonville a voice. They govern themselves, perform public service, and are available to provide connection from the Jacksonville City Council to the youth community. We, as elected officials with the city of Jacksonville, welcome their input and suggestions. So what I'm going to ask you to do is we're going to have a massive swearing-in ceremony here. Parents are going to hold the Bible. What you're going to do is you're going to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. And I'm going to, I'm going to give you a state your name. You state your name, not somebody else's, but your name. And when it comes to state your, I'll say state your office, just state the office that you're... Who? Tom, come on. What's Ryan's last name?
Warren.
Okay, Ryan Warren from Southwest High School, and you're occupying the seat representing Southwest High School. Okay. All right, so we're ready to go now. All right, repeat after me. I state your name.
I swear.
Y'all got all that right? Okay. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As?
As.
Your office.
Recorder.
Of the Jacksonville Youth Council.
Of the Jacksonville Youth Council.
And maintain and uphold.
And maintain and uphold.
All the laws and regulations.
All the laws and regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville, so help me God.
Of the city of Jacksonville, so help me God.
Congratulations and good luck on your year here. We're looking forward to seeing some great things come out of the Youth Council. So what we'll do here, if I get Dr. Woodruff to help me organize photographs here. I think we get some individual photographs, some group photographs. Let's do this.
First of all, parents, if y'all would say where you are, and the Youth Council members will come right here. Okay, anybody has a camera? It's time to get this shot. Where'd you have to go?
Oh, we can. Thank you.
The next presentation for this evening, we're going to recognize some of our 2019 Cleaning Green Star Awards. These are for, these are for holiday decor. And hello, Betty.
Hi.
I have with me Angela Washington on council. She's liaison to the Appearance, Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee, and Betty Shivelby, who is the chair?
Chairperson.
Chairperson, exactly. The Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee is responsible for the Clean and Green Awards, Clean and Green Star Awards. This is the fourth year of the recognition of the Holiday Decor Awards. During October through December, the committee asked for nominations and suggestions for homes and businesses with outstanding displays. The entire committee was invited to tour the city on December 17th, 2019, to review nominations made and to seek out other places for recognition. The committee found amateur and professional decorations. Some were simple and others were very complex. After much deliberation, the group elected to make several awards in several categories. So I guess you're going to read the description and I'm going to call up the name and Betty, you're going to shake your hand, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Or you're going to get the, why don't you pass them out? We didn't rehearse this. All right, so we'll start with our first one here, is our Best Traditional Neighborhood Award, and this is the 1,000 Block of Country Club Road. And we'd ask John Hamilton and Eva White to join us.
They're coming on up. Is Mr. John Hamilton here?
Mr. Hamilton, okay.
Hi, Ms. White.
Hey there.
Can you read the direction?
Yes.
Okay. How you doing? Congratulations. All right, so this particular award was given out for the 1,000 Block of Country Club Road, so it's nice to be in Councilwoman Angela Washington's ward because this goes to my citizens, so very good. The committee particularly chose this award because we felt that the effort is to be applauded. As many of you know, that Country Club Road is a very heavily traveled road and we anticipate to see more travel in the future. So just by looking at these particular homes, these three homes on that particular, sort of kind of like a cul-de-sac, but it's not a cul-de-sac, really brought a vitality and vibrance to the area that's well-traveled. So hopefully, in the near future, this can serve as a template for all homes within the city of Jacksonville to model after. So congratulations to our award winners for this particular award.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your holiday spirit.
Congratulations. Very nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, as always.
Next, we have our Gold Star Award for the Best Quaint Neighborhood, and this is Canaan Court. I'd ask Jay Williamson. Jay? Not here.
So the committee pretty much felt that this particular effort of the neighborhood, we wanted to recognize that because of the spirit and the vitality that it displays during Christmas time, so this particular home was chosen.
Next, we have our Gold Star Award for Most Festive Neighborhood Decor, and this is on North Commons Drive. This is Robert Soloski.
For this particular award, the committee believed that there were several homes that really made an impressive display, so the committee wanted to appreciate, sort of like an esprit de corps for the neighborhood, for this particular road located, excuse me, home located on Commons Drive, so congratulations.
Next, we have a Gold Star Award for the Most Patriotic Decor at 110 London Court. Janice Young was nominated for this. Is Janice here?
So this particular award, again, for most patriotic, and the committee really felt that this award was most prestigious because of the fact that this family has been decorating their home for the last past 22 years. So without a shadow of a doubt, the judging committee felt that this was the particular home that displays the most patriotic during the season.
Our next is Most Nostalgic Decor, and this is at 134 Aldersgate Road. Robert Pruitt. I don't think Mr. Pruitt was able to attend this evening.
The committee basically just loved the throwback decor and just thought that it was an effort, but it just seemed effortless when you took, when we took a look at it that night, so we just wanted to congratulate this particular family.
Next is a Gold Star Award for the Best Classic Decor, and this is 101 De Los Court and Nicole Rossisano and family. Oh, wow.
Yeah. This is a repeated award for this city of Jacksonville family. It's almost like a standard. They have won multiple years and it continues. And if you ever get an opportunity during the Christmas holidays, we encourage you to go by just to see the tremendous work that this family has put into their home decoration, and it just really lights up the community at large, to see your hard effort going into it. So once again, you are a winner and thank you for beautifying and getting into the holiday spirit. So thank you.
Thank you so much. The next is our Best Family Decor at 138 Empire Boulevard, and this is Dawn and Lucy DeHagera. DeHagera?
Mm-hmm.
Don't try it again, huh?
How you doing? This particular award was given out because, we're not going to try to pronounce his name again, felt that, he and his wife felt that this was a decoration all about the grandchildren. So grandchildren can keep you young and inspired, so this is a testament to all of the grandparents. Get out in your yards and decorate your homes for your grandchildren so you can be up here next year with us. Congratulations, sir.
Thanks, ma'am. DeHagera?
DeHagera.
I'll remember that next year.
We got DeHagera. We're going to get an award for pronouncing it.
That's right. All right, here we go. This is a Gold Star. This is the Griswold Worthy Award at 203 Audubon Drive. Charles and Deborah Miller.
So those of you who can appreciate the Griswolds, we don't have those movies anymore, but definitely this takes the award. We wanted just to recognize the Millers for all that they have done and basically exuberating their theme, not only for their children, but their grandchildren, so congratulations.
And you didn't mention, the lights go with the music. When the music plays, the lights flicker.
Does the needle on your kilowatt go round and round?
You just know it does.
Okay. Do you shut down the grid when you turn on the lights? Okay. Great job. Next, we have our Best Business Decor, and this goes to Zaxby's on Western Boulevard. One of our managers, Stacy Wilson, is with us tonight. Stacy?
Nothing says Christmas like eating chicken, okay? So this particular award goes to Zaxby's, the business off of Western Boulevard. Again, just the ambiance and the decoration just exude and just contributed to the Christmas theme on Western Boulevard, so congratulations to Zaxby's. You're welcome. I, oh, oh. With you in it. Oh, okay, sure.
One more, I'm sorry.
That's okay. On behalf of being the liaison for the Environmental and Appearance Committee, I just want to say to each and every one of our citizens, as well as those individuals that live in the county, every year, we have an award that we celebrate, decorations not only at Halloween, but also at Christmas time. So we want to encourage citizens to participate and to nominate each other, even if you do it as, make it something special for the kids, as a community service project or something that they can get engaged. We want you to feel that Jacksonville is your city and it will always be your city, and so this is just another effort that we would like to engage the participants of the city of Jacksonville, to engage in these awards. So when the time comes around and we are seeking nominations, please, please encourage and nominate your friends, nominate yourselves unanimously because we won't know it, okay? So just get involved with your neighborhood and just make it a fun time for everyone. So this coming October, we're going to be looking forward for more awards to pass out for Halloween as well as Christmas. So for those of you who participated, thank you so very much, and for those who are thinking about it, we're going to make it your service project that you will. Thank you.
Keeps Jacksonville festive during the holiday season. I'd like to, next, we have a presentation, and I'd like to ask up Mike Inero, Chief, Mike Inero, and the Race Committee members, and Deputy Sheriff, First Sergeant William Montjoy, North Carolina Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Representative, who's with us tonight. Okay, so Running with the Law is an annual partner event to National Night Out. The race consists of a 5K, 8K, and one-mile fun run and a virtual run. This is the seventh year for the event that is a fundraiser for the North Carolina Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run. This year's event raised, how much? $8,409.78 to go to Special Olympics. So Vanessa, you want to present that check?
It'd be my pleasure. Here we go.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
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 Oh, Chief. Save you a couple steps, anyway. All right. So, we, next to that presentation, we have National Association of Town Watch. And we have some of our folks here, or there on the committee?
Yes.
With you?
You can come back up.
Okay. Same bunch, huh? It's part of our physical fitness training program. National Night Out brings communities together nationwide to promote police-community crime prevention efforts. The National Association of Town Watch has selected the city of Jacksonville as a national award winner for the two-hundred, 2019 National Night Out held this past August 6th, 2019. This is the eleventh consecutive National Night Out Award for Jacksonville. And the 2019 National Night Out was held at Riverwalk Park in the downtown area, and hosted over ten thousand people, and was such a resounding success. If you've not had the opportunity to go to National Night Out, reserve the first Monday, Tuesday. First Tuesday in August. And I think that you would, it would be a treat for yourself and your family to come on down and see what our officers, our public safety people do, you know, and let them tell you a little bit about their jobs, and give you opportunity to have some one-on-one conversations. But this time, I'll present this to Chief Yonero and the committee.
Thank you, folks. Would you want to say anything?
Picture.
Okay.
Picture.
Yeah. Okay. Hold on, he's on, he's on speaker.
National Night Out is just a celebration of the police-community relations we have with the city of Jacksonville. I mean, does my heart good to see all those kids out there, and all the bicycles that are given away. But it really is a community event, and it really is a city event. And it's, we talk about police-community relations, but it's more than that. It's city-community relations. Every department participates. Every nonprofit is out there. So, it really is a great event. And if you haven't gone, you really do need to put that on your calendar and be there next year. Thank you, Mayor. That was the twenty-first or twenty-second that we've had here in Jacksonville?
I think it's the twenty-second.
I think we started it in, we started in nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, the twenty-second. Because we celebrated twenty years. And this is our eleventh award. So, we're really proud of the fact that we won this award eleven times.
Wow.
Wearing him out, Anna. Okay. The next item that we have tonight is we have a swearing-in for our Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services. We have some promotions. And at this time, I'd like to ask Chief Tallman, if you would join me up, our chief, and Randy Bruins, and Michael Williams. And your families. All right, Brandy. Brandy was born in Grand Junction, Colorado, and raised in Mountain Home Village, California. She graduated from Ucapia? Ucape?
Ucaipa.
Ucaipa High School in Ucaipa, California, in nineteen ninety-five. Weber State University with an Associate of Science in General Studies with high honors in 2001. American Military University with a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Studies with honors in 2010. And American Military University with an Associate of Science in Fire Science with honors in 2014. Brandy joined Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services on July 6th, 2010, and has served as a firefighter, driver-operator, and a lieutenant. She holds certifications as a firefighter one and two, hazardous materials level one, emergency vehicle driver, emergency vehicle driver trailer towing, driver-operator pumps and aerials, chief one oh one, fire officer one, two, and three, general instructor one and two, rapid intervention team fire and life safety educator one and two, and three. North Carolina Technical Rescuer, General Vehicle Machinery Rescue, Structural Collapse, Water Ropes, Trench, Confined Space, Agricultural Rescue, and Marine Shipboard Firefighter. North Carolina Firefighter Inspector, Level Two, probationary, and North Carolina Emergency Medical Technician, National Child Passenger Safety Certification, Advanced Swiftwater Rescue Technician, and graduate of North Carolina Breathing Equipment School. Brandy was a member of the United States Army Reserve. Did I say that right? What is USAR? Okay. I'm sorry. I was just trying to fill out the blanks for the... You weren't in Army?
Yes.
Okay. Strike that. Okay. Water Rescue Team, and is current member of Jacksonville Technical Rescue Team. Brandy and her husband, Tim, have been married for twenty-four years, and are proud of their children, Cody, twenty-three, and Bailey, twenty-one, and Kylie, eighteen. Somebody's missing.
Yeah.
Cody, okay. All right. So, you're going to do the penning ceremony. So, I'm going to go ahead and start with you. If you'll put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and repeat after me, if I can get to the right page. Okay. I state your name.
I, Brandy Bruins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I'll be alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties.
In performing my duties.
As captain of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
As captain of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced in any matter on account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will not be influenced in any matter on account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As state your office, as captain, of the City of Jacksonville.
Of the City of Jacksonville.
Fire and Emergency Services.
Fire and Emergency Services.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Let's reenact a couple of those, because y'all were so close together.
Oh.
You reenact this one.
Oh, reenact this, okay.
Brandy, if you'll stay up here, I want to get a picture of you with Michael also. Michael Williams has been promoted from lieutenant to captain also. Michael was born and raised in Zebulon, North Carolina. Michael graduated from Bun High School in 2003, and Fayetteville Technical Community College with an Associate of Science in Fire Protection Technology in 2019. He joined the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services on November fifteenth, 2010, and has served as firefighter, driver-operator, and a lieutenant. He holds certifications as firefighter one and two, hazmat operations, fire life safety educator, one, North Carolina Technical Rescuer, General Ropes, Water Rescue, Confined Space, Vehicle Machinery Rescue, Emergency Vehicle Driver, Driver-operator Pumps and Aerials, Fire Officer One and Two, Fire Instructor One and Two, Firefighter Instructor One and Two qualifications, North Carolina Emergency Medical Technician, and National Child Passenger Safety Certification. Michael is a current member of the Jacksonville Technical Rescue Team and the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services Honor Guard. And he's not in the Army, right? I'm just kidding. Michael and his wife, Stephanie, who's with us tonight, have been married for ten years, and her proud son, Landon. How old are you, Landon? Six? Michael's wife, Stephanie, and their son will assist in the penning and swearing-in ceremony. So, if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties.
In performing my duties.
As captain of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
As captain of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office as.
The duties of my office, as captain.
Of the City of Fire Department.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
I'm sorry, Fire and Emergency Services. Can't, it's hard to break old things here. According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities and judgment. So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations. Very good. All right, let's see, who's taking a picture?
Yeah, but all of the fire personnel, like captain or above, if y'all would come forward first, then we'll ask the entire department to come forward.
Captains and above, please come forward for a photo.
Hold it, have some more. People in the back, you good? You good, sir? All right, well done.
Do you want them up front? You want them called up?
Are you ready?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, normally at the end of the city council meeting, we have our One City Moment. However, yesterday, we had the Martin Luther King Day Parade, and members of the youth council participated. So, before they exit the building this evening, we'd like to ask them, we'd like to ask Glenn to run the One City Moment, which had to do with the Martin Luther King Parade and the role that the youth council played in it. Dr. Martin Luther King Day, Mary Moore led her Keeping the Dream Alive Committee to organize their annual march from city hall to the courthouse. Chief of Police and Public Safety Director, Mike Yonero, was part of that activity. This was the thirteenth year that the group had organized and operated the Keeping the Dream Alive March. Many people participated in this, including our youth council. The youth council carried the One City message to the community and stood together to show the community what they stood for. As the march proceeded, many of the parade participants sang, and many talked about the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. After the event, members of the youth council took the national day of service very seriously. They went to a local nursing home and rehabilitation center. There, the youth played bingo with residents, and otherwise engaged in the, with the residents in a spirit to show our true One City campaign, and the fact that they are committed to being One City. At this time, I'd like to ask you to join me in applauding the youth council members for their commitment to One City.
Okay, that brings us to our section of comment, public comment. So, this is a time the council has set aside during each regular meeting to hear comments from the public. This is not a question-and-answer session, but a time for you to express your views on city issues to the council. Each speaker who signed the public comment signup sheet may come to the podium when I call your name. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin to speak. And you may speak for up to three minutes. And when the timer at the podium, and also displayed on the screen, turns yellow, that is a signal that there is thirty seconds of time remaining, and you may wish to begin wrapping your comments up. So, with that said, I'm going to start on the top of my list here. And I have Mr. David Graves. David, you can come to this podium here. Thank you.
First, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations on being re-elected as our city mayor, to the city council members, to the city manager. My name is David Graves. My address is 1009 North Commons Drive. And Mr. Bittner, the council member and I are neighbors. I come before you to request a stay of execution or stop work order on the property at 360 Dudley Road. I'm here on admission to save the home of Mrs. Messiah James at 360 Dudley Street. My heart and passions go out to our community, especially our senior citizens and our children. It is the city's intent to demolish after several attempts by the city given to Ms. James to restore the property at 360 Dudley Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina. I'm aware of the number of attempts made by the city to get Ms. James to complete the work required to bring the property up to city code. I would have to admit that I have witnessed on several occasions, Mrs. James at the mention of property, at the mention of property with people working on the property. One Step Transitional Home Ministry Incorporated, a nonprofit. Because of local culture and the history of Mrs. James' home, we want to take over the home property, the home project, to keep the home intact and the history of the local Georgetown community. Mrs. James' home is a history, has history in Georgetown, in Georgetown. It was the only brick home built in the 1950s. Mrs. James and her husband built and lived in the home for over forty years. It has a sentimental value to her that can't be replaced. It is, it is, if it is demolished, a piece of her will go with the destruction of the historical home. One Step Transitional Home Ministry, which is a nonprofit, would like to see the future, like to see a future of the home at 360 Dudley Street. We would like to see the home built with solar upgrades, solar energy, and solar thermal purification water systems, and the rest of the property landscape cleared all the way back to the New River, where we provide boating ramps, fishing, and other recreation projects and services to our veterans in the Georgetown community. We request, as a consolidation, as a consolation, that the other apartment building across the street be demolished and another veteran home built by another funding source. In conclusion, One Step Transitional Home Ministry and the National Association of Mired Veterans, thank you for your time and listening.
And this, R.A. Maxwell?
Good evening. Reginald Maxwell, 1005 Commons Drive, North Jacksonville, North Carolina. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Dr. Woodruff, lawyers. I'm here as an appeal for the Jack Amiet Center. Before you, I have given a study done on delinquency and how it correlates to the crime in the community. If you would, I would like you to, at your leisure, take time to read it. I'm deeply convicted about the restoration of the facilities as it provides vital service to this community. I, growing up in Jacksonville, Florida, realized what my recreational facilities did for me. Idle hands are the devil's workshop. And after-school programs reduce crime. High-quality after-school programs can improve students' academic performance, communication skills, as well as social skills, and help with their behavior. It can reduce crime in the community by providing a safe, supervised environment during the hours kids are most likely to commit or become a victim of crime. These hours are generally from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. The chance of becoming a victim of either a violent crime or property crime in Jacksonville is one in thirty-three. This is according to the FBI statistical data of this state. This is not a want, but a necessity in this community. I, as well as others, understand that there is a resource issue and a land issue. I also realize that there are competing issues that you must manage and control. I thank you for your time, and I would like you to deeply consider restoring the Jack Amiet Center to its present or better condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Appreciate it. I have Jerome Redmond.
Good to see you, Mike. My name is Jerome Redmond. I'm an engineer.
I'm an engineer. I stay at 406 Ivory Lee Lane when I'm in town. I'm here on behalf of Ms. James for trying to stay the demolition of 360 Dudley. One of the reasons my, that I'm here is my understanding that you want to destroy it because it has been deemed uninhabitable and also that it cannot be repaired. I've been out there and I've assessed the property. I've got a few notes here on the property. Again, the history of it, it is in historic Georgetown. There is much history to, I guess, the supposed repair, repairs that should have been done, and there's a certain timeframe, and I understand all that. I'm a little late to the game. My understanding, there was a city council meeting a few months ago. They contacted me afterwards and said, "Is there anything that you can do to help us?" The current state of the house is that it, right now, it is uninhabitable. It is the floor framing, the supporting interior piers, this, this, they are completely compromised. The interior bearing, um, all the load-bearing interior elements have been compromised. The roof and the roof framing needs to be replaced. So in that sense, yes, right now, no one, it is not livable at this time. But I've been doing this for 25 years, and I've seen much worse. The great thing about this house is that the brick exterior, the brick walls, the brick veneer, the wood stud framing, and the foundation is sound. And my understanding is Ms. Ms. James and her husband built that hand by, that brick themselves. And it's the best part of, if you've ever seen it, it's the best part of the house. And it can be saved. I presented Ms. James a plan that has an open concept. We, so, kind of the good thing that the whole interior is destroyed now is we can come back and do whatever we want now. So the plan is to have an open concept where we would do a trust system that will go and have exterior bearing on the walls. And I designed a LVL and post system so that we'd minimize the load to the existing foundation, and it would go to the new system that I've designed. So you have a three-bedroom, two-bath, open concept, uh, roof, uh, new roof. We would keep the same look, it has a hip roof now. We would keep the same hip roof system there, um, at least the same design. But everything else will be replaced. I would ask you guys to, uh, excuse me, I would ask the council to consider not demolishing this house. It's, and I, from an engineer's standpoint, uh, it can be salvaged. Uh, one of the last things I want to say is, the design I have, it, it is designed to meet all of the energy requirements of the 2018 residential energy requirements, and it also is designed to meet the 140 mile-an-hour wind standards of Jacksonville, North Carolina. It can be done. So I would ask you guys to reconsider tearing down that house. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, Kiefer, Ms. Kiefer Clark? Good to see you, Ms. Clark.
Uh, I am Kiefer Clark. I live at 132 Armstrong Drive. And I'm here on behalf of my neighborhood and the children of Belfalk and New River. You know, uh, New River, Jack Amiette, was the hub of Jacksonville when I came here. And all the children in the surrounding area had someplace to go that they could walk to. Now, uh, with, uh, Jackson, Amiette being almost destroyed, we want to see Jacksonville, Amiette, improved upon. Not torn down, not moved someplace else, but in the area that it's in and more work done to it to make it available for children that don't have transportation because their parents are working to be able to walk to that place and play basketball like they used to play and all the things that, uh, they used to do at Jack Amiette. We used to be able to go there, you know, there are several rooms on the, each side of, uh, the, uh, area. And, uh, we had meetings there, we could hold meetings there without a charge because of being taxpayers. So all I'm asking for you to do is to improve. Not destroy, not move, but improve Jacksonville, Amiette, in New River area for the children. My children, uh, went there, they enjoyed sports there. And now I'm looking for the grandchildren to be able to do the same as my own children did. And not only my children, but other children in the community that can walk there, have study hours there, get together and, uh, do their homework together. And you know, children work better when there was someone else in their category to work with them. So this is what we're asking for in New River and, uh, the area. Improve, not destroy, but improve Jack Amiette area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I'm gonna give a few minutes. I know a lot of these folks are standing up in the back of the room. Probably should have let you go before we start a public comment. But go ahead and, uh, if you want to leave, uh, we'll take a quick breather here. Okay, I have Ms. Mary Moore. You got him. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Louise Pearson-Moore, 1013 Greenway Drive, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28546. I am the president and founder of the Keeping the Dream Alive Martin Luther King Committee. I'm here to thank the city of Jacksonville in its entirety for letting us even march. I'm thanking the manager for letting us use the back of City Hall to assemble, because that's where we assemble. And we march from the back of City Hall to the courthouse and back. We pray before we leave, we pray when we get back. And I just want to thank y'all so much for helping us out. I thank the chief police for marching with us. And I thank him for signing off on that paper saying that weekend march. He signs off my paperwork. And I thank, uh, Officer Vanessa Smith, Officer William, for patrolling behind us, letting the cars, nobody hit us. And I'm just thanking y'all so much. That's why I ran out there to get them. And I thank my committee members. That's the committee members. I have some more, but we had the Eastern Star meeting, we had some more work there. So half of them there and a few of them here. But I'm just here to do a public thank you to everybody, and I love all of you. Chief, I want you to march again next year. And the city council, please march with us next year. This is my 13th year. Some of you be there, some of you don't. I know you might have bad knees or bad legs, but we, at the DAV building at 1:00, that way you can sit down. So either there or there. And I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We go to agenda item number seven now. This is Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot something, didn't I? Imagine, I can't even imagine, I forgot something. Let's see here. Where'd it go? Oh, here it goes. Okay. Got excited. Okay, so we have, uh, some minutes from the January 7, 2020 Regular Workshop Meeting. And there are, um, several consen- six cons- six consent items on the agenda for tonight. And I would entertain a motion at this time to, uh, adopt the minutes and the consent items. Move the adoption of the minutes and consent items. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so now we're gonna go to, uh, item number seven. And this is a, uh, again, a text amendment. Deal with the slopes of ponds, and Jeremy, uh, Smith will be presenting this item. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a proposed Unified Development Ordinance to Article 5.2 landscaping standards. Specifically, it's related to adding some clarification. If you remember, some of you, in 2010, the city council adopted an amendment to the then zoning ordinance, creating amenity ponds. The effort then was to create an option or a requirement when stormwater ponds were located close to roads, in front of buildings, to give alternate standards so they would not be eyesores throughout the city of Jacksonville. One of the requirements of amenity ponds is, next slide, please. One of the requirements for amenity ponds is a 10-to-1 vegetative slope. And if you look at a stormwater pond, the vegetative slope is a shelf that would extend from the most shallow part of the water to, up to one foot. It offers up to a warning to anyone who may be treading into the pond. Hey, it's getting deeper, you may not want to go further. The intent of when this requirement was adopted, that this would be a full 10 feet of area. So you would go from one inch to a full foot at its deepest. However, it's not very clear in the current UDO when it was adopted in 2014. So staff is presenting this, along with some minor corrections related to the amenity pond section, to add that clarification, to clearly say that the vegetative shelf should be a 1-to-10 slope over a 10-foot area. We're also adding some clarity to the use of native vegetation. The amenity pond and other parts of the landscape section refer to a dated table that we used to use with the zoning ordinance. That's no longer applicable. So the native vegetation is just a clar- clarification. That's what we've been doing since the adoption of the UDO. We've also added some clarification of reference to city manager versus Development Services Director, which I'll also address in the next amendment. Also, um, referencing correct sections of the UDO where we pulled this from the original zoning ordinance. The planning board reviewed this at their December 10, 2019 meeting. They, along with staff, have recommended approval to adding this clarification to the UDO, and that it would eliminate conflicts with the current ordinance. I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions, Mr. Smith? This created a lot, uh, many non-conforming uses?
No, sir, uh, it should not be creating, because we've, when we've reviewed the site plans since the adoption of this, we've looked for that 10-foot vegetative shelf. We've just had some recent developments that had that question of, is the 10-to-1 slope required to go a full 10 feet? And we wanted to have that clarity before it became an issue.
Other questions? Jeremy, have we had many, uh, these type ponds installed in the?
Uh, we've got three. The, um, ones going around the River Life are amenity ponds.
Okay.
Um, then we've got one under review right now. You would ask me that, they'd call me on the spot. There is one along Bren- Brenmore Road near Humphrey Moving and Stores. There's one, it's off the road, but that was designed as an amenity pond. And there, I believe, one of the ones with, um, one of the newer apartment complexes fell within that, um, area. We will start seeing more as land becomes more used up. And it becomes, as we actually will probably bring in more amendments to you to kind of relax some standards and give developers more flexibility in using that amenity pond standard and maybe adding some other decorative elements.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
This is a text amendment to the ordinance, zoning ordinance. And at this time, I will, uh, reassess the regular meeting and open up the public hearing that's required in this matter. Is there anyone wishes to speak to this issue? Please indicate by raising your hand. This issue. CNN no want to close the public hearing, reconvene to regular council meeting. Councilor here being asked to approve the, uh, zoning ordinance, the text amendment.
Mayor Phillips, I move that the, um, council approved the UDO text amendment found in the attachment A, and that the text amendment advances a public interest by adding clarity and eliminating conflicts within the current ordinance.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Takes us to number eight. This is Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment. Uh, amendments to all articles referencing Development Services Director. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is very straightforward. Recommend a, um, proposed amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. And this, if you recall, the Development Services Department is no more. We are now planning inspections in community development. The UDO was adopted when the Development Services Department was in effect. Uh, so we were proposing to change all instances where it references the Development Services Director to city manager or their designate throughout the UDO. The planning board at their December 10 meeting recommended approval, along with staff, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Their designate?
That would be the, uh, trying to use a, um, we originally went with he or she. Um, that would be the city manager, the city manager or their designate.
Or the cities. Is or her? Her's designate. I've got about 18 of us majors in here now. Okay. Leave it to Jerry. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
This time, we'll reassess the regular council meeting, open up the public hearing, which is required in this matter here. And again, anyone wishes to address this issue, please indicate by raising your hand. CNN no want to close the public hearing and reconvene to council meeting. Your council, you've been asked to consider the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment.
Mayor Phillips, once again, I'll move to approve the UDO text amendment found in the attachment A. And the text amendment also advances the public interest by adding clarity and eliminating conflicts within the, uh, current ordinances.
Second. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to our last section of public comment. I have no one signed up for that. So we're gonna go into reports, and I'll start with, uh, what's the word? Glad to have you.
No report?
Thank you.
No reports, sir.
Didn't even get their names out of my mouth. Jackson?
Well, I did attend, uh, Keeping the Dream Alive, uh, event they had at DAV. I did get a chance to march with them. And as, as always, uh, they give a great event, very meaningful. I have to brag on my cousin, Ms. Mary Moore. I'm proud to be related to her and all that she tries to do in terms of scholarships for the kids and all. And it's just, you know, embodying that what Martin Luther King was all about is advancing our communities forward, you know, to, to make this country a better place. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bittner? No report. Mayor Proten Lazor?
Mayor, I do have a report. A good report.
Let's have it.
A good report.
Good one, okay. Good report.
Onwasa had our annual election on Thursday's meeting last week, and I am honored to report that Councilmember Bidner is, has been elected unanimously as the chairperson of the Onwasa Board. So we want to congratulate him.
Excellent.
He's done a great job. Also, a great testament to a great relationship that we have with Onwasa, and Chairman Bidner has brought a lot of, a lot of knowledge and wisdom to the board, and I've been honored to serve with him, and I want to congratulate him for that honor. It means a lot to those that know the history of Onwasa and where we are today in doing so, so.
Thank you.
That's my report.
You've been involved with it since its onset, haven't you? Pretty much.
Very close.
Pretty close. Plus, you were the city manager when we built our magnificent, yeah. All right, so that brings us over to Dr. Woodruff.
Mayor, members of council, first of all, several citizens spoke during the time of public comment regarding Jack Amiet. During the workshop tonight, the mayor and council authorized the management to move forward with two concepts to study how we will move forward with Jack Amiet. We anticipate that concept plans and opinions of probable cost should be available by late March, with the hope that we will give a report to the mayor and council in April for further direction. Second thing, as you know, yesterday was a national holiday, and what that meant was that the city did not collect residential garbage. So for those of you who had planned on being out early tomorrow to have your garbage cans out, remember if your Tuesday collection is going to be collected tomorrow, which is Wednesday. Thursday collection is normal, Friday collection is normal. So again, if your can was put out today, it's going to be picked up on Tuesday, and it wasn't picked up, just leave it out there, because the crews will be by on Wednesday, then we'll be back on a normal schedule. So beyond that, mayor and council, we thank you for the leadership and the guidance that you give this community, and we look forward to a great year ahead.
You're due a census report.
Yes, do you want to give your comments?
I have a report.
Okay, at this time, we would like to ask Glenn to come forward and talk about the census moment. Glenn?
Good evening, mayor and council. This evening, we're going to bring the people up to date a little bit about some of our population that we find it hard to count for Census 2020. As you know, the census work actually has begun, and they're canvassing right now in Alaska, which is always the first community they go to. We want to talk about the reason they go there is because it gets to Muckey on April, they can't get to the place. Well, we have some places that are hard to count too, but not for that reason. One of them is people who are military, and they believe that filling out the census form might adversely affect their residency requirement. Well, that's absolutely not true, and we've had some wonderful endorsements from previous commanders of the base and such there, in which we do try to pass this message on, and we're repeating that for this effort. Those billboards and other materials will be rolling out right before the Census Day, so we get, in that March 12 period, so that we can get that message out fresh and earnest. And then many people go, "Who has time for this?" Well, the answer is, we all do, because it's going to be so important for us to fill out our census form. And responding is never going to be easier than what it is now. When you get your little card, it's going to have a code in it that you just go online and fill it out, and you're done. If you can also, if you want to, just phone it in, and if you want the paper form, if you'll just call that number, they'll send you a paper form to your home, as it was, too. For those that are concerned about their information, know that the Census has never had a breach of their privacy or anything such as that. They are required by law to hold it confidential for 72 years, which then opens it up for people who do genealogical research and things such as that from the Census data. And they can't share it with any other agency of the government except for in its cumulative form, as it was put together. These are the tracts that are the most low response from the 2010 Census and in the subsequent American Community Survey that's out there. You notice that among those is a track 15, which is right in the heart of Northwoods, which is one of the hardest-to-count tracks in all of Onslow County because of the return rate for the area that's basically north of Henderson Drive into that track, as it was there. This is a summary of some of those areas that are out there, in the neighborhoods that are included within them, and we ask everyone to help get the word out. And among those hard-to-count populations we have are some that are standard for the nation, but others that are not. For instance, it's standard under the nation for having problems counting children under five, from birth to five years old. It is not standard to have veteran population counted. And here's one of the reasons why we demonstrate that, is in our county, we have a veteran population that's recorded by the Census Bureau at 23,000, almost 24,000 people there. We think that is a huge undercount of veteran population in this county, as it was. So we're encouraging all those, particularly those who have the wonderful hats on this evening, to help spread the word, to, you know, to have everyone declare their veteran status when they're asked to do so, because we want to take credit for the number of veterans we have. Notably, among the most reportable ones are the ones that are, that served post 9/11 and the Gulf War. But we're seeing the Vietnam era, to think that Onslow County only has 5,200 people that served in the Vietnam War just defies logic in, when you're looking at a 200,000 population county. So we know we're extraordinarily undercounted in that, in that particular war, as it was. And here it is by age, and they're really growing, as it was there, and we obviously have a lot of veteran status that's very low, but obviously those ages 35 to 54 that have gotten out of the service and remained in our community are that discounted. We're doing a lot of this by asking trusted local faces and voices to help spread their word, is get counted, that it's easy to do, it's safe, and it's confidential. And we'll be kicking out, kicking off a lot of our special efforts here just in about six weeks. They still, there are still openings within the Census Bureau for jobs, and if you want one, just simply go to 2020census-gov/jobs. They have about 100 positions still to hire here in Onslow County, and they actually had to raise the pay because they haven't been able to get all of the people that they want to get hired. And that's the brief census report for this evening.
So moved. All losing favor?